Call in four dash six at sec, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Gillan Gettis.
Here.
Mayor LaBras.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Return.
Okay, at this time, we have some proclamations tonight. We're going to start with our outstanding Hackensack Police Department color guard. So just put this here represented by one of the color guard and proclamation breeds as such, whereas the Hackensack Police Honor Guard competed in the Aquid Neck National Police Parade in competition in Newport, Rhode Island, whereas the Hackensack Police Honor Guard was awarded first place, best in precision in drill, third year in a row, which was earned by Sergeant James Smith, commander, commanding, Police Officer Brett McCarthy, second in command, Police Officer Manuel Tavara, rifle team leader, Police Officer Matthew Jacobson, Detective Luis Paminguez, Police Officer William Moiano, Police Officer Yanis Papinikolau, thank you, Police Officer Benjamin Farhi, Police Officer Frankie Garrett, Police Officer Felix Catzerones, Police Officer Kevin Small, Police Officer Evelyn Reyes, Police Officer Matthew Dagali, and Police Officer Frank McCall, armor or driver. And whereas their accomplishment is a reflection of their dedication and commitment to the city of Hackensack and its traditions, which started in 1971, under the direction of Chief Anthony Pierrotto, and under the command of then Sergeant Malcolm Green, and now therefore I, John P. LaBras Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the city council, can hereby congratulate the Hackensack Police Honor Guard for earning first place in the Aquid Neck National Police Competition. Wonderful job, guys. Thank you.
Captain over there can help.
I think it should be the other way, and the other guy would have saw everybody. I thought the same thing. I didn't want to. I think that's not the smallest one.
How about the green line up in front of the Yet Day? Sure, we did that? Everybody?
They still might be tall enough.
We're in between.
One more success story for you?
It's all right, you're fine. It's all good.
All right, I'll snap attention as well.
Hold off for a second, Kevin. Hold up, hold up. One second.
They can't do that.
I want to be hold that.
I'd like to ask Mr. Jolynn Turner to come forward, please.
Whereas Joseph Arthur Lencuitto, also known as Jolynn Turner, was born in Hackensack on August 2nd, 1951, to Nina and Arthur Lencuitto, where he was introduced to almost every genre of music available along with the music from his local Baptist church. By the time he graduated Hackensack High School, he was playing with The Temptations, influenced by Filet of Soul alongside JT Taylor, later of Cool in the Gang, and whereas Jolynn Turner is a singer, guitarist, songwriter, and producer, best remembered for his work with guitarist Ritchie Blackmore in Rainbow and Deep Purple. Jolynn Turner's talent combined with his stage appeal, vocal range, and his incredible chameleon-like ability to sing a variety of songs requiring a variation of vocal styles within a particular genre dubbed him "The Man with the Golden Voice." And whereas Jolynn Turner formed the local rock group Ezra, and later secured his first recording contract with Fandango, releasing four albums for RCA Records from 1977 to 1980. Jolynn Turner wrote and sang for Rainbow from 1980 to 1984, catapulting the band to a higher level of success. In 1989, he reunited with Blackmore and joined Deep Purple to record Slaves and Masters. And...
And whereas JLT's discography contains ten solo and two live albums, along with various session work and radio and TV jingles throughout the years. He also recorded, performed, and toured with artists including but not limited to Alice Cooper, Billy Joel, Michael Bolton, Cher, and more. And whereas Jolynn Turner has given back to Hackensack on June 18th, 2010, mentoring 70 up-and-coming musicians for the South Hackensack School of Rock, Jolynn Turner has received recognition and awards around the world, including Cultural Ambassador to Bulgaria in 2015, Legends of Rock Award in Italy, Peacemaker Award in Crimea, and the Man of the Golden Voice Award in Peru. So now therefore I, John P. LaBras Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, with other members of the city council, do hereby honor Jolynn Turner. Congratulations.
Actually, good to be here, Stephen. May I? Yeah, thank you very much, first of all. This is a great honor, but let me read from my statement. I would like to sincerely thank the city council of Hackensack for presenting this proclamation to me. It's a very grateful and humble recipient that stands before you tonight, and will always be an honor and a privilege that I can be proud of. They say it takes a village to raise a child, and I am extremely thankful that Hackensack was my village. My family and I moved to several locations throughout the years, and everywhere we went, we found warm-hearted people and friendly new neighbors that accepted us entirely. So this Hackensack, the citizens of Hackensack, have nurtured me and everything I have done in my career, and I can only hope that the future of the children of Hackensack will have the same type of guidance so that they can reach their goals, cultivate their dreams, just as I have. So sincerely, thank you all very much.
Good to watch. Before he leaves, I want to say a few words, because I've been following Joey back. First time I saw him was in Ezra, all right? It was a great local band, played all the CYO dances, Holy Trinity, St. Joseph's up in Montville. We used to follow them all over. He went on later to become lead singer, guitar player, in a group called Fandango, which was an outstanding band, four albums with RCA. Really thought they were going to go to the top, but you know, that's business, but they had a... Just, I still have all four albums, and I still listen to them. There you go. If you go on YouTube, check this guy out. He's played all over the world. He's big in Europe, he's big in Japan, he's played in Japan, he's all over the place. And he's... I was on a blog once, and they said, "Name your top 20 rock and roll singers out there." And I put Jolynn Turner's name in there, and all of a sudden about 20 people jumped on and said, "That's a good choice. That was a good choice. This guy can sing." Right? He can sing. So this is an honor. You know, 40, 30, 40 years ago, if we ever thought we'd be standing in these two positions right now, we'd probably say like, "What?" So this is really, really an honor.
It's my honor. Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure.
This is Joey singing with Rainbow, by the way. Stone Cold.
Yeah. Get this, Maya.
Got me tapping my foot.
Thank you all so much.
We got to get you.
Yeah, we got to get you.
One more.
One more.
Let's get something for the kids, though.
Absolutely.
We could do a school of rock.
Yeah, we could do a school of rock.
That's too much for you, all right?
Twenty-five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Joseph. Appreciate it.
It's my pleasure. I've known him so long.
The old band.
Still have all the points?
You got it? Okay. Could be here in the morning? Did you get it?
Joey Hollis.
Yes.
Do the check first.
Yeah.
All right.
Who's next?
Now we have another very special event happening with the Main Street Alliance. Please come up. Is that working? They say good things come in three. So Jolynn Turner, we're proud you're from the city of Hackensack and part of that tremendous historical background that Hackensack has. Thank you, we're proud that you come from the city of Hackensack. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good things come in three, so mayor and council, I hope to give you a little more good news tonight. As you know, the Main Street Business Alliance has been supporting bringing the performing arts into Hackensack, and thanks to the strong leadership of your administration with the purchase and renovation of the first, the Atlantic Street Park, and now the renovation of the Performing Arts Center, the dream is now getting close to becoming a reality. We want to thank you, the entire mayor and council, for your amazing perspective in understanding how important the arts are to Hackensack and for seeing this project through, sometimes against some heavy headwinds. There's a lot of places you could spend money, but the arts, I've read statistics that every dollar that goes into the arts, it brings tenfold back into the city. So I don't think we're wasting our money investing in the arts. Anyway, we want to thank you for the amazing puzzle piece, which will someday soon be a part of our great new downtown and the experience that we hope to provide in the downtown. A while back, you asked if the business community and the private sector could be counted on to contribute funds for the renovation. So the Main Street Alliance began raising funds and started an effort back in 2016, and the business community, when asked, was not only extremely generous, but very enthusiastic about the idea of bringing the arts to Hackensack. About eight months ago, we presented the city with a check for $220,000, all raised privately and backing the amazing efforts of this mayor and council. To date, we have continued to raise funds, and thanks to some very generous people and businesses, we have tonight an additional sum of $110,000 to present to the city, making our total $330,000, and we're still not done. We hope those funds will help you finish the art center with either lighting, or the marquee, or the sound system, or whatever you need, in your discretion. We're very, very confident of a beautiful product. I've already toured the facility. It's going to be a wonderful thing for the city of Hackensack. Now we're working on some legislation. We're hoping for some help from our legislators to get with some liquor legislation. We're working on it. We'd like to also thank the following donors tonight. We already thanked everybody at the last presentation, so I can't go through a list of 50 names, but the major contributors to the next $110,000 that we're presenting tonight, Hakimian Companies, thank you, Incera Foods, who have been just absolutely sensational in helping us raise funds, Larry and Sarah from the ShopRite Corporation, done a tremendous job and a big supporter of everything we're doing in Hackensack. Metro Meridia, who's also building a project on Main Street now. I'd like to personally thank Lakeland Bank, who made a tremendous commitment to the downtown and has contributed a second $25,000 gift. NAI Hanson Companies, Alfred Sanzare Corporation, who has been also tremendous. Every time we ask for anything, they always step up to the plate. Metro Meridia, I mentioned. Harwood Lloyd and Heritage Capital, who's also building the... refurbishing the United Jersey Bank Building. Those are just some... The complete list is available to anybody from either the upper main alliance offices or the rest of the people that have contributed. My company contributed $25,000, and I'm hoping to be able to raise more funds in the coming months. So anyway, without further ado, I'd like to give you the check, maybe take a picture with you guys, and get some... Anybody who's here from Lakeland Bank, or Oortani Bank, or any of the people that helped contribute, please come up, and we'll...
David.
Take a picture. You have the check?
Yes.
On up here.
are going to benefit from this new Performing Arts Center, which is almost at its completion. Should be up and running in October. We're already planning events. The fact that the partnership created between the Main Street Alliance and the city of Hackensack to get this done has been, nothing short of phenomenal. It's been a great, great effort, especially by them, to go out and raise this money from the private sector. You know, projects like this are expensive, and every penny helps, and a lot of this money will be going towards the lighting and sound. It's going to be a state-of-the-art theater, 225 seats, state-of-the-art light, state-of-the-art sounds. We plan on doing six or seven marquee events in this theater every year, along with all our local theater, which we do all the time, and add shows as they come around. We're looking to really make this a very successful venue. It's perfect for the city of Hackensack. It gives all our citizens an opportunity to enjoy the arts. Jerry was 100% right, you know, pushing the arts is huge. You're not... You know, you need arts in your community. You go to big cities, I mean, you look at New York City with the Theater District, and you know, the people it brings in. And you know, we're not going to compete with Broadway, we're not going to compete even with the Bergen Pack, but we're going to be our own destination here in Hackensack with our own pack, the Hack Pack, or the Sack Pack, whatever we're going to call it. But I like Hack Pack, you know? And it's a wonderful thing. And as part of the promise from the city, we're moving forward with our redevelopment, which is, you know, we're putting 2,500 residents probably on the streets in the next few years, and they're going to get to really benefit from this, and adding more green areas and more arts areas around are really going to help. Next week, we're actually starting, or about two weeks, the conversion of the two-way street, which we've been talking about for two years, three years, four years, five years. It's actually starting in about a week and a half with State Street. That'll be a four- or five-month project, and then we're going to move right to Main Street. It's going to be a little pain for the game, but it's well worth it. Progress is not easy sometimes, and people are used to being... Having it one way. A lot of people don't realize it used to be a two-way street for 30, 40 years, and it's going to be that way again. And the study shows that the successful downtown needs a two-way street. So that's part of the city promise, moving forward, along with all the other stuff going on. So this is a great, great donation by you guys, and we really appreciate all your hard work. So thank you very much. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute intermission, and then we're going to go right through the docket. Take a five.
Five minutes for those up on leave or stay, or whatever.
In case anybody wants to leave. Maybe...
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes?
We have Diane Somer from the chamber who just wanted to say a couple words.
Sure, absolutely. Hi, Di.
Mayor, council, I don't usually speak at these meetings, but I did want to take the opportunity. Diane Somer, I'm from President of the Chamber of Commerce, and I also sit on the Main Street Business Alliance. I sit with a lot of business leaders at many meetings every month, and I wanted to say that I personally and in business support the Cultural Arts Center. I see a lot of people putting a lot of muscle behind this, and with all the things that are being done for the city at this time, this is one of the best things that I've seen. And I know a lot of man-hours went into getting this done, and it's wonderful. And I'm so happy to be here to present this check, along with Jerry and all the other business leaders. I think it's such a major step in the right direction. I applaud you for all the work you've done, and I just am so happy to be a part of it. And I'm looking forward to, you know, going to the first major event that we're planning. And I just really wanted to say that and to thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Okay.
Are we okay?
We're okay. We're going to start.
Are we very good?
Okay. All right. Let's move forward. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the COW and the regular meeting of May 30th, 2017.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, you were absent for that meeting.
For May 30th, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Need a motion?
Second.
Need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
I'm staying.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Gillan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes of the COW and regular session of June 13th, 2017.
Everybody was present for that meeting.
I need a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia. Aye. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Gillan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBras.
Aye. Moving forward, right to the city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and council. City manager's report for June 27th, 2017. One, city is gearing up for the Fourth of July event, Summer Concert Series. Extra pamphlets, dates, and times for all summer activities and events are located at City Hall and on our website. Two, Marion Street update. Traffic Division is completing a study in that area. Recommendations are due in my office at the end of the week. As we explained, it was going to be a two-week. Police Department was going to monitor the activities on Marion Street and make recommendations so I could get back to the gentleman that's being affected. Three, Fraschini Park, current cleaning and video of underground pipes taking place as a remedy for the flooding of the baseball field. There's also, because of the grant that we're going to be awarded, it's been decided that we're going to basically kick the field in the opposite direction, so it will basically hopefully put us on higher ground and also avoid the flooding of the field and certainly use gravity and drainage to help us put these fields back in use and obviously try to mitigate as much of the flooding that we have. Number four, the mayor's already acknowledged, but there's a two-way conversion that will start on July 5th on State Street, which is the two-way conversion, and that construction will start, it will take approximately four months to complete this phase of it. We're going to have some obviously traffic concerns. The city is going to go out and purchase, hopefully this week, two signboards to alert and advise motorists. We have a reverse 911 pixel and the city website that we're going to purchase, that we're going to post updates of how this is going to go, but obviously we have motors to drive through the city, and the only way they're going to know is for us to message board them or acknowledge them as they come through. But hopefully, people will use Coolheads, prevail, and take their time, but as the mayor stated, it'll be worth the effort, and we will be better off at the end of that construction. During that construction, we will post all the signs, expect delays, alternate routes may be necessary. Obviously, for those people that know the city and they know a way to steer around that, might be in their best interest to just take that alternate route for the time period, and we'll try to monitor. But hopefully with school out, we won't have as much congestion and backup. Number five, the reorganization meeting is scheduled for July 1st, 1:00 p.m. here at Council Chambers. All are welcome to attend. Number six, the annual fall-in firefight... All are welcome to attend. And seven, I'd just add, is that the COW meeting, effective tonight, is now videotaped. So the folks that didn't catch the COW meeting, or weren't present in the past, you'll be able to watch both meetings, and they'll be on our website. I just want to acknowledge that on 6/28, Shakespeare in the Park, 7:30, Taming of the Shroom, and on 6/29, Movies Under the Stars, Despicable Me Too, will be at the Atlantic Street Park. And that would be the City Manager's report. Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, I'll just wait for the City Attorney to get back up on the dais. Let's go with Resolution 107-17.
Okay, for that, Mayor, we need a motion to remove it from the table. It was tabled.
Okay, this resolution was tabled, so I need a motion to remove it from the table, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And now you need a motion for...
Now I need a motion. Read the resolution, please.
This is Resolution 107-17. It's a resolution authorizing participation in the Bergen County Aggregate Energy Procurement Cooperative Pricing for Natural Gas and/or Electricity Supply Service.
Okay. Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 197-17.
This is the same thing. This was tabled at the last meeting, so we need a motion to remove it from the table.
Okay, I need a motion to take this off the table, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, this is Resolution 197-17. It's a resolution formally designating redevelopment and authorizing redevelopment agreement with RNH Hackensack Urban Renewal LLC for the redevelopment of Block 308.01, Lot 3, otherwise known as Lot C, pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 40A: 12-1 et cec.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, Resolution 218-17.
This is a resolution for the adoption of Ordinance 18-2017, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 141 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Sewers to provide for temporary discharges to the city's sanitary and/or storm sewer system. Ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing. We need a motion.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Open to the public.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. This time, anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that Ordinance Number 18-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 219-17.
This is a resolution for the adoption, the final adoption of Ordinance Number 19-217, which is an ordinance authorizing entry of real estate purchase and sale agreement for designated redeevelper RNH Hackensack Urban Renewal LLC for sale of Block 308.01, Lot 3, Lot C pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 40A:12-1 et cec.
Okay. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Leah. You did?
No, you did.
Sure. Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. This was open to the public? This part? Deb?
That was open to the public, yeah.
Okay. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this, and this only, please come forward? Seeing none, motion to close?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Now you need a motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that Ordinance Number 19-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 220-17.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 221-17.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation for NJSA 40A:4-87, the 2017 summer food program.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 222-17.
A resolution authorizing award of contract for Architectural Services Emergency Operations Center Elevator Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And last but not least, in the regular agenda, Resolution 223-17, payment of bills?
Resolution authorizing payment of bills. We need a motion.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, before we go through the consent agenda, is there anybody that has any issue with anything on the consent agenda? It's pretty short, there's only five items. Nobody? Okay, read the consent agenda as...
Okay, the following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certificate, certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. Consent agenda consists of Resolution 224-17 through 228-17. 224-17 is a resolution urging state legislature to extend the 2% cap on police and fire arbitration contract awards. 225-17, a resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses for 2017/18 term. Resolution 226-17 is a resolution authorizing a leave of absence for Jeanette Diamanti. Resolution 227-17 is a resolution authorizing a person-to-person and place-to-place liquor license transfer at 455 St. And Resolution 228-17 is a resolution authorizing Richard C. Tecvorian as temporary judge for the Hackensack Municipal Court.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. All righty. At this time, I'd like a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. You have maximum of five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor.
Good evening.
Eric Anderson.
Eric, good evening, Vice Chairman.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening. Always a pleasure to see you all. Speaking on behalf of the Main Street Alliance tonight, I'm the Vice Chairman, and with all the good things that are happening in the downtown, and all of the new nightlife that we're expecting to occur, we are experiencing some challenges that we'd like to discuss. So one of the things we'd like to bring up is hopefully, a way to address our current ordinances, which conflict with hopefully, some of the progress that we're going to be making. And one of those issues that we're running across is the noise ordinance, and I guess lighting ordinance. So specifically, outdoor cafes that want to have some music, and lighting for some of the restaurants in the downtown. So we understand that there are a lot of factors in this, and we are requesting that we could create some kind of task force to see how we could maybe get an exemption, or a special opportunity to work with something different in our downtown to help promote this. So that's what I'm here for tonight.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
I'll speak to that before we move forward, because we're already on that. We're, you know, we have some very antiquated ordinances in this city that are not conducive to having a successful downtown, and we're, we'll be working on that. We're going to either be amending some of these ordinances, or changing ordinances, whatever we need to do. But I agree with you 100%, and that's something we, you know, it's growing pain. And Al Deb will definitely be on that. City Manager's aware of it, and we'll be moving forward, working on it.
We're happy to help in any way we can.
Yep, absolutely. Yep. It's already started, actually. Thank you, though.
Good evening. Cassine Gaines, DeWolfe Place, Hackensack. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Councilwoman Deborah Keeling Geddes on her tenure serving Hackensack in this capacity for the past two years. During that time, I've gotten to see her work up close, and I truly believe she has done a fantastic job being a voice for many throughout the Hackensack community. And frankly, I don't think she has received the credit she deserves for her efforts. A few months ago, the councilwoman was asked what she had done to further redevelopment in Hackensack, and that question really got me thinking. And for one, the councilwoman was the first municipal council liaison to the new cultural arts board, which I serve on, which has the purpose of increasing the art scene in Hackensack and bringing more people to our downtown area. As liaison, she has been fantastic in cultivating new ideas, bringing acts to our Atlantic Street Park, and being a great champion and cheerleader for that space as a resource to be used not only for out-of-town performers and patrons, but local artists and arts lovers, including homegrown talent like Jolynn Turner, who was recognized here tonight. In fact, the councilwoman was instrumental in seeing several hometown heroes recognized formally by the council, including JT Taylor and the late James Leverett, Hackensack's first black councilman, who believed in the spirit of inclusion, especially among the city's elected officials. I think the councilwoman would concede that redevelopment was not her number-one priority. Instead, she used her time on the council to be a vocal supporter of our sanitation workforce when privatization was on the table. She championed bringing the dog park to town, which seems likely to happen. She has raised important concerns about where our tax dollars have been spent, whether it be asking why municipal newsletters weren't produced in-house, and why we were spending money on both an expanded and new recreation facility as two separate buildings. A lot of the proposals that have come before her over the past two years seem to have been aimed at bringing new people to Hackensack and giving them an excellent quality of life. The councilwoman's focus has been on making the lives of the people who already live here the best it can be. That includes listening to the constituents in the first ward who think an expanded recreation center will negatively impact their quality of life. All the residents of that community count, not just the one who complains about sound coming from the current cultural arts center, and I hope their concerns really are listened to. And, like with the sanitation issue, this council reflects and changes course, or considers other options. She didn't always score the photo ops and headlines, she wasn't always the loudest, but her voice was definitely heard, and she will be missed. And on a personal note, it saddens me to see this city lose a councilperson from my part of town. 60% of the council is from one section of Hackensack. By Saturday, that number will be 80%, as four-fifths of the council will all live within blocks of each other. There was a beautiful article in The Record last week about the high school graduation, which highlighted that in this city, our diversity is our strength. I don't think that exclusively has to be racial diversity, but also diversity of ideas and life experiences. My hope is that citizen Keeling Geddes continues to do what councilwoman Keeling Geddes has done, being a champion for those in Hackensack who need one. I wouldn't say I agree with her on every single thing, and that's quite okay, but I have been very happy to see her as one of my representatives during her time on the council. She has carried herself with grace and class, a true positive example of the kinds of people we have throughout this city, and for that, she has my respect and regrets that she is leaving. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassine.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Senator, would you like to go up?
Thank you.
She came up.
Doc Russell, 240 First Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. I just come by to, I sent letters out to all people I've worked with over the years, and nobody responded back because I'm leaving town next week. I've been in Hackensack for about 51 years, and now I'm going back to my home in Alabama and run, help my family run the recreation center that we have down there. But I hope that, so I hope that I would have developed a relationship with a number of people in Hackensack that respected me. But I guess that people don't. Because I don't know, I've worked with almost everybody in this room. And some people not in this room, who's dead and gone now since I've been in Hackensack for 51 years. I've volunteered on almost every unit y'all had in Hackensack, including Bergen County, including the courts. I guess, I guess it's a good thing, but I've enjoyed being here. And that would be the blessing that I've taken away with me. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Hey, Randy Glover, Hackensack. So I think Mr. Gaines so eloquently stated what everybody feels about you, Deb. So I don't think there's anything else to add. But I do want to talk a second about the cultural arts department. I think the whole city council has done an excellent job and looking forward to this year. As you know, we started doing Hometown Heroes last year. And the first event, which is July 7th, we'll be celebrating Hometown Heroes again, of which Ms. Forssman is one of the Hometown Heroes. And basically, Hometown Heroes are for people who've really contributed to the fabric of Hackensack, you know, trying to build it, to make it a better place. And at every step of the way, as well as everybody on the city council, Mr. Lombardo, wherever he's at, okay? He's backed everything 100% as well, Ms. Forssman as well. I don't know if you guys know Mr. Nick Latino from Toyota of Hackensack. So this year, we've added a new component. We are giving away three scholarships to high school students at the first night. So not only are we honoring our Hometown Heroes, we are giving away three $500 scholarships to high school students. He's also giving away a $500, I would say, donation to a young man with autism. And we're celebrating everything that this city has to offer. This entire city council is responsible for all of the events that'll be happening, July through August, which will have a Latin event, Caribbean event, Hometown Heroes event, Hometown Celebrity, which is a young man by the name of Matthew Whitaker. If you don't know, he was the winner of the Fox program with Steve Harvey. He'll be performing on July 21st. We have the first LGBT event in Hackensack, which I don't know if that's going to be controversial or not, but the council was like, hey, let's do it. So the whole council is, I would say, very brave to take these steps, to do all of these different types of events. And I applaud you guys. Thank you. And thank you for letting me be a part of it.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Loretta Weinberg. I come from across the river in Teaneck. But at least this bridge does not charge tolls. So it's easy, it's easy to get here. And before I, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Members of the council, before I talk about why I really came here, I just want to compliment the Main Street Alliance. I think the work they're doing, the funds they raise are absolutely amazing. I mean, you're a lot more fun than the Teaneck. I've been in Teaneck for a number of years. I've never seen anybody present a check for $110,000 privately donated from townspeople. So they are amazing. And the work you're doing here to promote the arts is so needed today. You know, with all the government cutbacks or the idea that the arts are so dispensable, to see this city stand up and really do something about it on behalf of all of your residents, on behalf of the children in particular, whose lives will be enriched by having such a cultural arts center here. And I would say on behalf of the region, I was kidding about the river, but as I was sitting there, I thought, you know, we should do something together and maybe get a pontoon that guides people back and forth on the river and do.
The shuttle.
I thought about it when I was sitting here. We'll have to talk about that, Diane. So we can really develop this as our own little mini waterfront. But I really came, and I was just sort of an added asset to let me see what goes on here. But Councilmember Deborah Keeling Geddis, I really came to honor you. Although I don't know you personally that well, your name is very famous in my office, as you know. You've got some friends and colleagues with whom I work. And I served on the local council in my own community. So I know the time it takes. I know the sacrifice it entails, particularly when you have a family. I know sometimes the not-so-nice things that come your way when you're serving in local office. But it is so needed, and we are so indebted to you for having been here the last couple of years, for having stood up, for making your voice heard, for garnering a tremendous amount of support in a kind of crazy election. And so I came personally to say thank you. And then on behalf of the Assembly and the Senate to present to you a resolution, as I tell people when I can present a joint legislative resolution, it does not require the governor's signature, which is how I get them through. It is with great honor that we present to you a joint legislative resolution from my colleagues in the Assembly, Gordon Johnson, who's working on the liquor bill.
All right.
So I want to tell you that. My colleague, Assemblywoman Valerie Vernary Huddle, and myself. And I'm not going to read all the whereases, except one. It says, whereas Deborah Keeling Geddis has continually demonstrated an uncommon measure of public spiritedness and in so doing, has provided a standard of excellence in public service toward which others might strive. And then the important resolve clause. And be it resolved by the Senate and the General Assembly of the State of New Jersey, that this legislature hereby honors Deborah Keeling Geddis, pays tribute to her meritorious history of service and commitment to the cities, to the city of Hackensack and to this state, and extends its sincere best wishes for continued success in all of her future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will see you all on Saturday.
See you later. Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. Okay. Next, please.
Good evening. Paul Nichols. Thank you for your service. Councilmember Deborah Keeling Geddis, thank you. And congratulations to you all. Before I forget, this isn't what I was going to talk about, but it reminded me, I was going to talk about affordable housing, but I wanted to, I still never heard anything. They never put that thing up on the Housing Authority's website about eviction prevention that we thought about.
You're talking about under Hackensack Housing Authority?
Yeah, yeah. They did it on the county website, under ESG, which is the, you know, funding for people that are having a hard time. And as you know, just like the senator said, there's going to be cutbacks in all kinds of areas. And, you know, with the low wages that are offered now, a lot of people are working, you know, two jobs and they can barely get by. I'm dealing with a couple veterans trying to help A.J. Luna, you know, find some housing for them. And that's what I'm going to segue into again, is if we can work on still more affordable housing. I did speak to the county about that bus terminal thing that I deal over there. And I would keep plugging away at it with them because it's not off the table. It's not done. It's not like nixed. It's, it could still go forward. So I just want to say, please keep that in mind because it's hard to find anything that's really affordable.
Ted, could you make sure that you call Tony Fierenz? Make sure it gets posted on their web, whatever they have over there.
But other than that, I'm not going to take more time. And thank you very much and congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Paul.
Jason Solm, 151 Prospect Avenue. First and foremost, Councilwoman Keeling Geddis, we first met running against each other.
Sure did.
And I'll tell you, the more after you won and you sat in the seat, the more and more we spoke, I, it took a lot for me to admit that I first looked at you as an adversary and then became to respect you as an amazing woman with a heart of gold. And I want to let you know, you do such a wonderful job for this community. And the people that have already spoken about you have done you due diligence, but I just have to tell you, you're wonderful.
Thank you, Jason.
Next, I'd also like to congratulate the Hackensack Honor Guard. They go up every year. Some years, I go up with them. They do a wonderful job. They come in the top three every year. They, first place almost every year. And they do look really sharp. There must be some local uniform guy that does that.
Well, you did it, right?
I don't know. I don't know who that is. There must be somebody there. Moving on from myself, for the Main Street Alliance and the money that was donated tonight, you know, I think it says a lot about a community and their leaders when a group of businessmen get together and hand over a check for $100,000. I believe that the cultural arts center is going to be the anchor of our downtown. I think that we are going to show the rest of Bergen County and the rest of the places that are redeveloping how it's done. And I think the Main Street Business Alliance has given us that opportunity. So on behalf of the board, I want to say to this council, it's your project now. So I know you guys are going to do a good job with it.
Thank you.
Doc Russell. He's been in Hackensack for a very long time. I play pool with him almost every Friday night. We're going to miss you. And lastly, I just, real quickly, after the planning board meeting the other night, did you guys come up with a conclusion on what you're going to do moving forward with the M&amp;M Center?
Not yet.
Not yet, but we're, there's discussion on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
All right.
Laura Rodriguez, Clinton Place, Hackensack. Councilwoman Geddis?
Ma'am.
I don't have anything prepared because, quite honestly, we had a school board meeting tonight and I didn't think I'd make it here in time. But I wanted to get over here. I wanted to thank you for all of your service, for being a friend, for putting up with a lot these past couple months. And I know that your future is going to be bright. You have your children, you have your students, and you are going to continue to make your difference. And I think the difference will be larger than what you've accomplished to this date. But again, I just wanted to congratulate you. And again, I'm sorry, I don't have anything prepared. But you can't follow Loretta Weinberg and, you know, expect to get a point across. But I just did not want to miss your last meeting. And again, thank you for all of your work on everything that you've done. And everyone else in the dais, I will see you on Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Next, please.
Rich. I'm Rich Sopow, Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. Deb, of course, you know, I'm with you. Thanks for your service. And it's only a beginning, so thanks a lot.
I don't know about that.
Okay, well, whatever you say. I just wanted to start by asking the council here, or the LeBrosse team, as it's known. Are you trying to alienate the opposition here, John? With all this praise and, the meeting has become just sort of praise about you and other things. And it's almost sort of ersatz. It's, it seems like just happy talk, just to have the council feel sort of, you know, sort of have some praise-worthy things to talk about. So I just want you to know, I'm wondering if you're trying to alienate the opposition, which is really healthy for you, by the way, okay? So I'll start with an aphorism, which is an adage or a saying, okay? And it's appropriate today, because I got my tax bill today, or yesterday. And so the adage is that government is an endless pursuit of new ways to tax. And you surely have done that, John, okay? And that's wonderful. So back to what taxes are all about. I was told that 3% was the average of raising taxes. Some taxes went down, you know, magically of some sort. My taxes went up 7.5%. I live in a modest home. It's really fallen into disrepair even. But it's nothing to it. It's a small, little home. And it's been, the taxes went up 7.5%. It's ridiculous, and you know it. And so we're going to, we're going to talk about taxes. And, you know, maybe there'll be a tax revolt soon, okay? You know, just like the old days. Maybe a tax revolt. See how you handle that, okay? We'll see. And what else? I had some other things I wanted to talk about. What you're spending on is raising taxes. They're unnecessary things. There's so many people that don't even, weren't even on to it. They don't even want these things going on. But you're going to try to push them through anyway. The two-way streets, millions and millions of dollars, sort of just, you know, spending, just to maybe tally that list of praise and praise for you in some way, or the council. Okay, let's get back to the council. You did run on the placard or the, sort of the moniker of low taxes and honest government. Oh, my gosh! You know, I was just, I mean, I guess you tried to see if people would listen and just, you could just tell them a ball-faced lie. Because that's what you did. Because like I said, my taxes went up 7.5%. So I mean, I can't see how you campaigned on lower taxes for the city when I'm living in a modest home and 7.5% of my taxes. And honest government? I don't even want to go there, okay, John? I just don't, all right? So, so other things, you know, I see that we're still talking about redevelopment. I still don't see what your plan is. There's no plan at all. It's, it's just, let's do this and let's fix that building and this one. And then the one on Mercer Street still has a problem. There's still no movement there. You still refuse to talk about that. And we want some answers. You know, your first four years, we'll call that a honeymoon, okay, John? Because these next four years are not going to be a honeymoon for you. We're going to watch, we're going to, we're going to talk, and we're going to stay on everything you do, okay? Is that okay? Do you mind that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So some answers, please, especially the Mercer Street project.
Number one, it's a flat-out lie that we haven't addressed it because I've addressed it multiple times up here, that there was an issue with the building being damaged next door.
I know, but that's not the answer. You're giving the wrong, this goes back to you honestly.
I tend to disagree with you. That is the answer. But I'm not going to go back and forth. So, and I'll speak to that later on.
All right, we're going to talk about that later on, you said, okay?
Sure.
So, okay. So I guess I'll stop there because, you know, I don't want to be cut off. I'd rather not be told that, hey, your time's up. Because I'd rather just speak and not listen to the timekeeper. So thank you very much for the, for the time. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Carolyn Davis.
Albert, is Albert still here? Was that noise coming from today? You filmed it?
Yeah, but it was not.
That was 2:40, ma'am.
2:40. But if he would come up, since you're more familiar with it than anybody. I'm sorry, thank you, Mrs.
Carolyn Davis.
This is a reference to, to, uh?
Main and Mercer.
Main and Mercer.
150-170 Main Street. We are having meetings with the developer for 150-170 Main Street, monthly. We had our meeting with them on?
Yesterday.
Monday.
Yesterday.
Was it?
Yesterday, yeah.
Okay. And as it stands now, the neighboring building at 142-148 is scheduled for demolition within the next two weeks, three weeks. We're waiting for PSCNG to do the final cutoff. For at this point, my understanding is just gas. Electric had been done already. We'll get the shut-off notices from PSCNG. And then, once we have those shut-off notices, the demolition contractor who is engaged and contracted for will be able to commence the demolition of that building once they're issued final permits from the city of Hackensack. At that point, as soon as that building is taken down, a shoring plan is in place to make sure that there's no damage to the sidewalk. And shortly thereafter, we're estimating by the end of July, early August, we'll be able to finish the piles on site at 150-170 Main Street. Once the piles are complete, we'll start seeing framing come out of the ground by September. So, and I realize that there's, this has been a waiting game. But from where I'm sitting, the city had to take a very careful position in all of this because there's public safety and there's relationships, contractual relationships that we can interfere with legally. So we are on track to have that site back up and running shortly. And that's, that's the, that's the long and short of it. I'm happy to answer any.
May I cross-examine you a little bit on this?
Absolutely. I will do my best.
Why is the building being demolished?
The building is being demolished because it had been determined that the developer at 150-170, during its pile driving, had damaged the neighboring building to such an extent that repairing it would not have been economically viable.
Okay. And this was public record because there was litigation involved, which we don't have to go into the litigation, but there is a pending lawsuit out there.
Right. So we now have a green light to have.
Why couldn't they continue doing the pilings while the building was damaged?
Run the risk of a catastrophic failure spilling onto Main Street.
Which could result in what?
Injury, property damage.
So, and these answers have been out there for months and months and months.
Yes.
This is nothing new. So for somebody to come up and say, we're hiding something from the public, would be a untrue statement. So, all right, thanks for your input.
You're welcome.
Albert, appreciate it. Next, please.
Carolyn Davis, 192 Stanley Place, Hackensack, New Jersey. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Deborah Keeling Geddis. It's not always how long you've been in a position, but it's what you've done and the time that you've been there. I, for one, am totally grateful. I thank you for keeping us abreast of what was going on so we can make educated decisions. Sometimes you have to know both sides in order to make an educated decision. So I thank you for that. I will be looking forward to continuing to work with you in the future to make sure that Hackensack continues. that Hackensack continues to grow forth, and the community continues to find out everything that is going on. So congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the planning board meeting, I asked a question regarding the new recreation building. That question was, has a traffic study been done? And the answer was no. And I find that very odd, and I'm trying to understand why not. Stanley Place, where I live, for many years now, has tried to make our street, which is a two-way street, and much wider than the streets down by the M&amp;M Building, a one-way street. One of the last things that happened was a traffic division on that little block to tell us that the traffic pattern would not be good. I cannot, for the life of me, understand why a traffic study was not done down by the rec center. Those centers are much, those streets are much narrower than Stanley Place's. Fire trucks have trouble getting through the streets as they are. It's a danger, and if we could have a traffic study done on a street that's not going to have any added traffic, really, it was just changing it, the residents wanted to change it from one-way to two-way, because they found it dangerous pulling out onto First Street, if they did a traffic study on that, I think a traffic study should have not, should have been done, and I have no understanding why. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. If we had to do that in our little block, I don't understand why, with this big development, there was no traffic study done. I don't know if you have an answer. We haven't gotten an answer yet, but there should have been one done.
I don't want to take up any of your time, but I will address it when you're done.
Okay.
Are you done? My answer to that is, this center isn't at one given time, wouldn't be used any more than it is now. You're not going to see a large, if it was a go there, we're looking at some other options on this right now, but if it were to go there, Ms. Davis, you're not going to see, just because the building's going to be bigger, you're not going to see a large influx of traffic because of that. You're not going to see...
We weren't going to see that on Stanley Place either, but I was made to do a traffic study.
Well, you weren't paid to watch.
And Stanley Place is just...
We voluntarily did a traffic study through the police department for you.
No, I didn't voluntarily do it. I didn't ask for the traffic study. I was told we had to do a traffic study.
But you were changing the flow of traffic from one-way to, from two-way to one-way.
But it's the same traffic.
Doesn't, no, no, it's, that traffic study was to determine whether that was a feasible and, and good thing to happen. We're not, the, the traffic flow there is still the same traffic flow. The streets aren't changing at all. We're not making anything one-way, we're not making anything two-way, we're not changing any of the street or the traffic patterns. Therefore, every car going to that place would be doing exactly the same thing. We weren't looking at a large influx of cars.
It is, and I think honestly, Mayor, if you're going to build a big rec center like that, with all that you're adding, you are looking for more people. You're not going to have the same amount of people. You're looking to develop it, so you can attract more people and to do more things. That in itself is going to bring more traffic, and it just doesn't make any sense to me why a traffic study was not done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kathleen Salvo, Hudson Street. I want to thank Debbie for all her dedication, for all her hard work, for her inspiration to the city, for being an intelligent person who likes to take all sides of the story before she makes her decision, not to make a decision, and, and even to change her mind when she saw she didn't get all the facts with, with a couple of applications, when she did her homework and found out that, and if she had made a wrong decision, to change her mind, because she was woman enough to do it. I feel really bad, because I don't feel like I'm going to have anybody representing the people up there, and I hope some of it were off to the, your other, you know, people that are up there, because nobody represents the people of Hackensack. They all have their own agenda. We come to talk to them, to try to make sense, to try to bring pros and cons for doing a project, and all of a sudden, it's set in stone, and, and nobody's hearing what we said we have to say. We have a beautiful state-of-the-art cultural arts center, and yet, we're going to compromise and do a Mickey Mouse, what do you call, a recreation center, thank you. So why are we just doing that? When we want to have, we waited all these years for a great recreation center, one like Teaneck, one like Cresskill, one like Englewood, who have acres and acres of, of field in their recreation. They have a recreation center, and they have acres around it. They have enough of parking. And after say that we're not going to have any more people or not any more traffic, well, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Why are we spending $6 million of taxpayers' money and not going to increase the usage or, or the capacity of the building? All that building needed was a floor, and that's all it needed, is a gym floor. It serves kids from all over the city in its capacity, because it's just X amount of big. But we want a real rec center, and I think it's an embarrassment if we put this rec center here, because it doesn't fit, it doesn't belong, it's unsafe. Mr. Mayor, you're out campaigning against the airport, because you're saying it's air traffic. This will be, this would be a danger to our kids. There's no fire zone. We have minimum 200 people, and the law says you have to have a fire zone, which would be adjacent to the building, which would be in front of the building, which we would lose 16 more spots, because the fire zone has to be with the yellow curb in case there is a fire. We can't navigate a fire truck to the location, and when it gets there, it's not going to have any place to park, and we're 100 parking spaces short. So why would you want to spend all this money building this facility, and you're going to shoot yourself in the foot, because the capacity is not going to be what it should be? So I wish you would really consider, you know, Hackensack kids deserve better, and Mr. Sims, you had your people here, people talking for the program. Basketball is fine in Hackensack. We gave a lot of scholarships. We did it with a lot of dedicated people like yourself, who were coaches through the years. We did it with every gymnasium we have. We did it with all the facilities we have, and we didn't spend $6 million. So why are, in times when our taxes are there, we're on fixed income, and we're spending $6 million for this facility? I wish you would think about it, do it at another time, because our taxes are going up for so many reasons, and find a location where this building would, would suit everybody, have enough parking, and be something to be proud of. Not a, not a building that's going to be stuck in an already congested area. And then to threaten us, shame on you. Threaten us and say you're going to sell it, because you don't, because if we don't put it there, are you going to sell Carver Park? Are you going to sell Johnson, Johnson Park? This is, this is a neighborhood facility. Who has attracted a lot of kids from other neighborhoods? Steven told you he was there. People from other neighborhoods have come, but again, the word is capacity. So why are we doing this? And why are you threatening us and saying you're going to sell it? I think, I think that's a shame. And also, the priest from St. Francis has, and all due respect, cannot talk for the neighborhood. He's not a neighborhood person. He's a person who's working at that church, who just, he can come and go where does he please? We live there. We have people parking in our, in our driveways, and when we tell them to move, because we have to get out, they give us the finger. We have to contend with the church, we have to contend with the, with the cultural arts center, which is not a problem, because it doesn't happen too often, with the school, and with the neighborhood. We, that neighborhood is fully developed. To even consider it was, was, was a mistake. So please, go back to the drawing board, do it with an open mind. Hackensack kids deserve better. The neighborhood does not deserve this, this unsafe condition, and, and just think about where else we can put it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina Depaska, Parker Avenue. Councilwoman Killengeddes, thank you. Thank you for standing up, being there, and thank you for listening to people, because that's what you, I've learned you do. You, you do. You listen to people. Rich, about the taxes. The CFO said 20% of the increase was municipal. I know that's not lower, but it's not all of it, but it still went up, and still coming, whether it's coming out of this pocket or that pocket, it's coming out of our pockets. Councilman Sims, earlier you said, you know, when they were talking about the combined sewer, about the garbage in the street from a store, that, you know, the store should be held accountable for the garbage that people are throwing in the street? That just struck me as absurd, but then it was pointed out to me, too, that you had a fish fry, and I, I'm using the word "fish fry," don't get upset. You did get upset when somebody used it once before, but that was what was on the sign. And it wasn't cleaned up after. There was garbage around the courts from, after the fish fry. So maybe, you know, you should have the players, it was for junior basketball, they should be able to throw it in the, the garbage can. Also, I still am hearing that you're looking for the position of rec director, and I have not seen that it's been advertised. Why have we not advertised for a rec director? Greg Leosie can't do both. This is his busiest season for cultural arts. He's got a full plate. I think you're asking a lot. I really would like to know what's going on as far as rec director, because, like I said, I'm still hearing that Mr. Sims is in the running for that. He should be deputy mayor, as traditional, but, you know, not rec director, definitely not. With these liquor permits, that's a slippery slope, and we don't want a bar on every corner, as it was said in the newspaper. We really don't want a bar on every corner. 2,500 new apartments, one permit for every 100, that's 25 that are permitted, would be permitted. And how are you going to stop somebody when that's what the, the law is? I'm telling you, it's a slippery slope. Hoboken, we don't want to be Hoboken. Hoboken doesn't have the county jail there. Hoboken doesn't have the homeless shelter there. These are added conditions pre-existing that really need to be looked at. You get out of jail and go hop in a bar on Main Street. Really, you can't get into the homeless shelter, you're going to hang out at a bar on Main Street. We don't want cafes. I thought it was just going to be a beer and wine for restaurants. This is, no, this is alcohol, and that's not family-friendly. That's, that is really, definitely, definitely a slippery slope, because you don't know what the consequences could be. And when you're dealing with alcohol and all these other factors that cannot be controlled and the pre-existing, really, really need, we don't want to be a party city. We don't. We like to go out to dinner, but the people that live above these cafes, they like to have some peace and quiet, so that's another thing you're going, you know, going to have to, to weigh that. With the rec center, planning board, their recommendation is that you listen to the residents. The residents haven't heard anything back. Really, they really would like to meet with you again, as I had said, then, in an informal setting. Some people were put off at the planning board. They didn't, weren't used to doing it, and, you know, the way it was run, but a lot of people did show up, and a lot of people did tell you how they feel, that it's going to be detrimental to their neighborhood, and I really do hope that you will listen to them, but they're ready to fight for it, and this is what, you know, they, they want you to know. They're, they're ready to fight for their neighborhood, and they've already shown some, some bite by showing up all these times. But please listen to them. And, okay, rec director, why have not advertised?
I would defer to the city manager on that.
The rec director position remains open, because with the timeline that I was given to address that problem, I didn't feel that we had the time. So Greg has the experience. The cultural arts center has not opened, so I asked Greg to steer this till we could get through the summer rec program and get to the fall. He accepted the challenge. We're making headway. The City of Hackensack obviously has a very expansive and developed rec program, and we will readdress that. There's no point in advertising for an opening, because there is no opening, because I'm not at that point. But I have to tell you...
There was somebody in the position.
Who retired.
She didn't do anything before she retired? Is that what you're saying?
No. I don't seem to remember saying that.
Well, then, then how is there nothing for somebody to do?
Greg Leosie is filling that position, so right this time, I don't feel the need that we need to put a rec director in there, and I want to get through this process.
We need somebody to check on all the permits Dave Sims has taken out, because he has every gym locked up. We need somebody to look at that, because basketball isn't the only game in town, and other people want to use the gyms.
Okay. I want to speak to liquor permits, because, you know, a little misinformation there. These are not for bars. Albert, are you around, again?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it for restaurants, correct?
My understanding of the legislation as drafted and is introduced is the liquor license could be for either restaurant or bars.
Or bar, but it's, it also says it's at our discretion. We actually, the criteria is set by us on who gets them, what's it going to be, size of restaurant, there could be different criteria, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the city definitely has some, some discretion in terms of how these things are going to be.
Right.
And they have to reside in the downtown.
And they have to be in the downtown area, but we're not looking to put a bar on every corner, but we would like people to be able to go out and have a cocktail with their dinner in any restaurant, in any restaurant area, unfortunately, you know, some people might not like that, but that's part of redevelopment, and it's very important to us. But we're not looking to put bars on every corner. That's not even part of our conversation or part of our goals, so...
Everyone wants quoted the same.
He's quoted as saying he wants to have a little bit of a bar crawl. Yeah, the bar crawl, all right, I'm not... Thanks, thank you, Albert. Did you want to say anything else? I'm sorry.
I didn't.
No, okay. I'm also going to address the rec center, because I know people are wondering what's going on, and maybe I can just put something out there to answer some of the questions ahead of time. We have tabled this for about 30 days, approximately 30 days, with the developer. We've informed or we've told our planner to look at other options, which he's doing right now. He's working, they're working very hard at looking at other options on this, on what we can do, and we're looking to work with the, with the citizens, but it takes time. You just can't wake up the next day and say, "Okay, we'll put it here." It doesn't work like that. It's not that easy. We have to work at it, and if you're going to do it right, you're going to do it right. So we are looking. We're, our planner, who is very good, Fran Reiner's one of the best out there, is working his tail off, and hopefully, we come up with a good answer. Good evening, ma'am, how are you?
Hi, Mildred Dotson, and I just want to get your permission just to speak for a couple of minutes.
Surely, ma'am.
In your meeting, thank you, to say to Debbie, you and I go back a long ways, and I am so proud of you and your short stay here in Hackensack. I wasn't here for the whole entire time, but at the beginning, you made Hackensack the community that you came from very proud. We were very proud of you, and we were proud to have you serve us here, and I'm sorry that it couldn't have gone on longer, but we don't always get to a point where we can stay together and our views are one. Sometimes we're different, I know, because I'm different. So when you express one thing and someone else expresses another, don't mean that they dislike you or they don't want to be bothered, it just means that I see another direction. I don't see the direction that you're going in, but I see my direction. So I had the opportunity to ride down Main Street to see the work, and I'm proud of the work that's being done down Main Street. What I see so far, what you're doing, is Hackensack is everybody's community, not just yours, mine, not mine anymore. I'm a resident of Georgia now, so...
Still yours.
It's, it's good, it's good. When I left here, I left here, everybody was my friend, and I returned with everybody being my friend. So, listen, it's still plenty of work to be done, so help them. You may not agree with everything that they say and do, but if they need your voice in the community, speak for them in your community, so we can get whatever needs to be done, done, and we all can feel proud of being a resident of Hackensack. I saw the Sprinkle Park. Now, that could have been a little bit bigger, but I'm pretty sure that the kids love it, and they're going to love it even more for the month of August. But it's good seeing everybody. Everybody looked well, and everybody's doing a great job, I hear. Some dislikes, and some not-so-well enough, some not-so-good, but that's where we live. So you know, when I was here, I disagreed with a lot of things that you all saw, but it'll get done. Debbie, we love you, and we love the work that you've done, and now we have Dave left, so they'll beat him up. He'll get the whip in there, okay? So, take care, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Mildred.
You're right under the bus, Dave.
Good evening. Pat Savory, Little Eye Street, Hackensack. You addressed one of my things I was going to say. You addressed one of my things I was going to say. I'm here to represent the first ward because, as you know, we have a lot of people there that don't speak the language or that maybe aren't comfortable enough to come up and talk in front of everyone. I'm very glad that you're considering everything we talked about on the planning board because this, this building will be a devastation to our neighborhood, and we do need a bigger, better place for kids to play. And that's just not it in our little first ward that's so overcrowded as it is now. So thank you very much for considering all of that. We hope we have something to celebrate in the first ward like we had a celebration tonight, knowing that maybe that's going to be in a better place. Deborah, thank you so much for everything, all of your support and being here for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Summers, Summit Ave, Hackensack.
Been a taxpayer for almost forty years here, and thank all, I thank all of you for your service. Sometimes you'll be on the council, sometimes you'll be serving wherever you are, Georgia, Hackensack, in another way. But that's so true, wherever good people are, they serve their community, and that's important. So I know a lot of things going on, and I know that you are all trying to do your best for our community. That's the key. So I figured I'd throw in a little levity before we close up tonight, à la Jonathan Swift, and I have a modest proposal that if you have any buildings you're building, the rec center or a soccer dome or these things work out for our best, which they could be, like maybe the Ice House for hockey, to satisfy everyone, you could just name it the Hackensack Taxpayers Dome, Hackensack Taxpayers Recreation Center, to give tribute to everybody here and, and you, all of us that are contributing. But thank you again for your service, and whether you're serving as a councilperson, which is important, wherever you serve, I know good people are going to do good things. Thank you, Councilman Gettis and everybody else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I had an interesting morning today. My name is-
Aspeda.
My name is Paul in Calcaterra, and I'm from the first ward. I took a ride today to Sea Caucus, and I met with the environmental director and the recycling person of the town. And I thought I'd exercise my civic duty, and she was very, very, very happy to see me. I had met her once before. And she is a young woman who has sort of come up in the ranks, and I thought it might be a good idea for me to meet with her to get some ideas of what we could do for recycling in Hackensack. She was passionate, and I am passionate too. As the city is moving along, we need to think about recycling. She was a very bright girl. Her name is Amanda Neshewit, Amanda Neshewit. And I told her today I was going to come and speak before the council, and I just want to give you a couple of ideas about what maybe we could do. She suggested some things, and I thought maybe I could give some of my assistance in helping the city as it moves forward with the development program. She's told me Sea Caucus is probably the first, if not the best, in recycling in all of New Jersey. Eighty percent of their waste is recycled. She says it's based upon tonnage. The more tonnage you have, the more money is generated and given to towns or the town or the county. She says as you make money, you save money. By dumping all the time, it's costing more than recycling, okay? I hope, I hope you are listening carefully because I think it might be a way for Hackensack to make money for, for itself and maybe, maybe, you know, help out with the taxes or maybe some other areas. She says the funds can be used for all kinds of things. It can be used to buy bins, visuals. It can be used to maybe buy a recycling container truck. Okay? Also, I think it's very important is education. People say, ah, I'll take this throw it away in the garbage. It's easy. Yes, it's easy. But if we teach people, or at least we show people some, some effort with the city, maybe we can make a difference in our environment. I was also sitting there, and who came in but Mr. Mayor Gunelli? I thought that was so nice. He sat down. He's a former DPW superintendent. And he mentioned about what happens in his town, that sometimes commercial people, eh, they get a little lazy. What's in that dumpster? Not a lot. Okay, we're going to need you to fill it up with the correct materials. Otherwise, you know what you're going to have to do? Take out your wallet because you're going to get a fine. Okay, I don't know if that happens here, but it might be a good idea. I'm willing to give my assistance, Mr. Ehrenberg. Thank you, Mr. Gunelli, if you are watching me tonight. Also, this is some of the visuals they send out to all of their citizens about what can be recycled. Oops, got to see it the right way. What can be recycled and what can't be recycled. I don't know if that goes on today. So I'm asking you to think about the future about recycling. I want to put my, I have a passion for it. I have to tell you, when I see plastic bottles around my car or nearby, I pick them up, throw them in my trunk, and when I go home, I put them in a recycling bin. So it's something we as Americans need to be more conscious, and maybe Hackensack can make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul, hold up. I want to address something here. I wish you were here earlier. We had a presentation at the COW session earlier about our sewers, and we saw some camera work that was done down in the sewers, and you cannot believe the amount of plastic bottles that are down in the sewers and the havoc it's causing down there. I'm sure it's just, you know, has a, it's a big contributor to the backups. And that's another great reason to push to recycling. I agree with you a hundred percent about the education. We spoke earlier about educating the people with throwing, how to throw things out. Years ago, everybody would just do anything anyways, whether it was grease, bottles, whatever, cans, didn't matter. Now, we have to recognize the fact that we have to take care of the planet and recycle. But is this young lady that works for Sea Caucus at a full-time position here?
Oh, yes. She started, she started part-time. She attended Bergen Community College, then she went to Ramapo.
Why don't you get the city manager her name, and maybe he can reach out to her?
And I got to tell you, the mayor also told me, if you need help, I was a stranger, you know? He said, if you need help, just call me, and we'll have, so I wanted to try to-
If you get, if you get any information, we'll, we'll look into it.
If we have a link, you know, maybe we can learn from-
We'll take you up on your offer to help as well.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we offer a part-time job.
Okay, well, anything that I can do to help, I feel passionate about. And as I, as the city moves forward, we have to think about that. So I have some ideas and, all right.
Mayor, if I could just have a minute?
Yes, you may.
The city is going to have some goal-setting meetings established after the new council is sworn in. I'm personally very, very interested in recycling. One of the things that I think that really serves people, and I tried to do this in my prior service in other municipalities, is to go to clear bags. Because once you go to clear bags, it identifies what's in that bag. So when you dump those bags, black bags in there, you don't know whether people are putting bottles or cans. So when these other communities, they just tag them and leave them, say, sorry, we're not picking that up. But if we just separated our bottles, cans, and the things that could be recycled out of our trash, it will lower our tipping fees, so we will spend less money. Another issue is that I really think that in a community of this size, having a recycling yard where people can come, I guess people just kind of enjoy that process, where they can bring their bottles and cans and newspapers, and it almost becomes a socialization thing where they come, see their neighbors-
Or compost, you know?
-or compost or all of those components. So all of these things are going to be bantered about to see if they make sense. But I think that taking the recycling issue seriously in a city of this size could really be just a tremendous piece of-
Yes.
And also an example to other communities that this can be accomplished. And I would really, hopefully, you know, I have a lot of moving parts right this minute, but really like to get involved in this. And, and I've tried on several occasions, but unfortunately, tenure kind of separated me out from taking the next step to make that happen.
Well, maybe I can become your assistant.
Everybody's looking for a deputy.
One, one last thing I want to leave you with. She said to me, China, who buys a lot of the recycling, now is becoming very selective. And they are, when you do streaming, I said, what's streaming? Streaming meaning everything all grouped together, and they're now rejecting it. So we have to-
I don't want to commingled.
Yeah, commingled, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Andi Post from Clinton Place, Hackensack. I just want to say I'm really pleased. I am so glad I came to this meeting because I'm hearing things this evening that really do make me happy. I love the idea of recycling. I'm so proud of the downtown cultural arts center and all that's going on. I'm really in favor of that. And I am so happy that you are tabling the idea of the M&amp;M Building and that you're relocating or thinking about relocating. And I would love to make a suggestion. I was going to make the suggestion the evening that we had the planning board meeting, but I got cut off. We, if we build a geodome, and from what I understand, there is actually a dome sports complex at Paramus Catholic High School, and I happen to know, because I'm working on another project, that geodomes, much like the dome at the Epcot Center, is a natural, a natural disaster-proof shelter. So there are grants that will be given if you choose to build the dome because it becomes the city's shelter. So I would love to, you know, be able to talk to the gentleman who's doing the planning or suggest any ideas or, I have lots of information about geodomes, so if he wants to reach out to me, I'm happy to help. I also have a letter from a neighbor who asked me to read it at tonight's meeting. I don't think I'm going to have to read it after all, but I would like to submit it so that you have it for the record.
Andi, could you give the city manager your contact information, so?
Absolutely, I will give him-
With that information about the geodome to the planner?
Excellent, yes, I will be happy to do that. And then I just want to say to Deborah, thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much for doing it eloquently and elegantly, and, and I know I'll see you around town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Ganastino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killeen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay. Leo?
Well, when I get into this beautiful journey to play politics, Debbie and myself, we go by like about, what, sixteen, seventeen years?
Yeah.
So I just want to thank you for all your service to the city, and really, you were really have, and thank you for all your contribution. The same come from the residents. We really thank you for what you did for us. Thank you to the Main Street Alliance for that check that will help to try to improve the lights and the audio systems and the art center. And congratulations to the honor guard, our police officers, they look fantastic. And it's wonderful to recognize people that, that come from Hackensack and then people like Joe that really get into artists, and I hope so we can use these guys to try to help with the art center. People like Taylor and Joe, they really can help. And it's really nice to see the kids around the splash park, and I hope so we can make another, another part of the city in the way all the kids, they got places where they can enjoy. And the last thing, but not last, it's nice to see Mildred again in town. And thank you everybody for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leo. So nice to see the honor guard here tonight. We're always so proud of our police department, and every year, you know, our honor guard just places so well. So, you know, it's nice to see that they get some of the kudos that they deserve as well, not only from our community, but from elsewhere throughout. Also nice that Mr. Joe Turner was here. It's nice to have folks come back to Hackensack that have left. Mildred, that includes you too. We're always happy to see people return back, and it was a nice night of recognition for him as well, and an inspiration to, you know, everyone as to what he was able to achieve in his lifetime, and great for our young people to see that as well. The Alliance check presentation, we have a wonderful working relationship with the Main Street Alliance. We've partnered on many, many things, and they've really been a true advocate for the cultural arts center and for the Atlantic Street Park. Yes, we've taken a lot of abuse, yes, council members on, on doing some of this, but now that it's coming to fruition, I think everyone, and what we've heard tonight, is we've garnered a lot of support from the residents throughout the city, and it's gorgeous. I mean, we had a tour the other day. It's really, they've made remarkable progress. We're trying to do a little bit of a cleanup on the first floor because really, our big investment was upstairs where the two-hundred-and-twenty-five seat is going to be. And we're looking for early October to be having the grand opening. It's probably going to be an exciting weekend, you know, have lots of events planned. So, you know, put it on your calendar, and we hope to see a lot of folks and get used to our new place right in the center of the downtown for our cultural arts. I know last time I talked to you about the meeting with the FAA, about the air traffic over Prospect Ave and, and Second Ward and the Hackensack Medical Center. I want to thank everyone who came. We did have a full house. I want to thank the residents that came and continue to challenge these folks, and we have to continue to do that. I think it was quite obvious that they came and they were not prepared, and they could not answer the questions of our residents, and we held them accountable, and we have to continue to do that. I have been in touch with them again. We've had some follow-up phone conversations. They actually called me again today. So a number of the serious questions, they promised me that they're looking into and will get us answers. So as I have more information, I will continue to keep you informed as always. Actually, they have one of their noise committee meetings this Thursday afternoon. I will attend for the city, and, you know, of course, our primary concern is safety, but we do have serious noise concerns within the city as well. As far as some things here tonight on the docket, some stuff about Lot C. You know, Lot C is the parking lot between Faschini Park, Boulder City, Ice House that we are in the process of completing the sale to the developer. There's going to be about three-hundred-and-seventy-seven units there. They're also going to be providing for the city two-hundred parking spots in the city, for the city to use in their garage. And, you know, we will do a revenue share, et cetera. So that was all part of this agreement. I think it's going to be a wonderful use of that area, which is just a flat surface parking lot now and underutilized at best. And from what I can see of the concept drawings, it's going to really be lovely. There's an easement kind of, not smack in the middle, but on the west, western side of that. So you're going to see the development kind of split into two phases or two parts. That enables them to also do, you know, a very lovely open space in the middle there where you're not going to be able to, to build over that easement. So in some ways, it helped the city get what they want, so a little more green space, they're looking at fountains and some. I think it's really going to be a nice asset right there with Faschini Park as well. I think the city manager, John, mentioned the two-way street conversion that's going to be starting very, very soon on State Street. I know a lot of folks have been waiting for this, especially the development community. This was key to us having the development happen on Main Street. I mean, we were pretty much, John and I were pretty much told flat out, you keep this a one-way Main Street. We're not coming here and investing this kind of money because it's not going to be successful. So this was something that had to be accomplished to enable us to have a resonance in our downtown as we see happening. So we're looking forward to the start of that as well. Some talks about the M&amp;M Building and the plans for downtown. Dave and Leo are recreation specialists on our team. We all have roles on our, on our city council, and they put a lot of hard work, sweat, and tears into coming up with a good plan for upgrading our, our very, very long neglected recreational facilities in the city. And I think, you know, we need to give them credit for that. And I think, you know, we need to give them credit for that work. And it hasn't been done in a vacuum. I know folks wish they had more information, but I think they've done their share to keep folks in the loop. So I just want to get that said. But I also wanted to say, as a planning board member, that we take it very seriously, the comments that came and the folks that came to the planning board and expressed their concerns and their issues. And the council is required to listen. And the recommendations of the planning board that night were very, very strong. And, you know, since, you know, John mentioned the thirty-day moratorium on making any attempts to start or make progress with that particular effort, we are, we are looking at alternate plans. You may like them, you may hate them, but we're looking into them. And we're doing it very, very seriously. So hopefully, once we have it, we will have follow-up meetings so that we can, again, present those things, get some two-way conversation going, get some feedback. But we do want you to know, we listened, the planning board listened, they came up with some very good suggestions. And the city manager has taken the bull by the horns and he's exploring those options. And I thank Ted very much for that. Taxes, some questions about taxes. We can only talk about the city portion of the taxes. You know that. It's the county, the school and the city. So each of us contribute to the tax bill that you received this week in your mail. The majority of the increase did come from the school. The school tax levy increased by 5%. The city tax levy increased by 1.67%. So you have to also, if you're going to come to complain to us, you have to also talk to the school folks as well. Because it's, it's, it's all coming out of the same pocket, I understand that, but you have to realize where some of these increases coming. On the city side, because I think this is worth mentioning, and I can only talk about the city because that's all I know about. The average home in 2015 compared to the average home in 2017, going back two years, okay? The average home increased slightly in value, a couple of thousand dollars. I think it went from $239 to $241, the average home in Hackensack. That average home today in 2017 is paying less city tax than they paid in 2015. Now, that's if you meet that criteria. Your house was at $239 in 2015 and it's at $241 today. It's slightly less, a hundred dollars less than it was in 2015. Yes, I understand, last year we had a nice decrease, went down a couple hundred dollars. Oh, it creeped back up a little bit. But this is what stabilization is about. It's never going to be perfect. I don't know how many other towns in Bergen County you can go to and say, on an average home in two years, my tax, city tax bill is smaller than it was two years ago. Not a heck of a lot of them. So we need to give credit, again, to our CFO, to all of our city employees, our city manager. I think they came up with a good budget for the city. I think they're managing the finances of the city very well. And let's work together and let's understand together that we are growing as a community and we're doing the very best we can to control these expenditures. Finally, to Debbie, I wish you well. I know we're going to see you. And we look forward to that because we look forward to hearing from all of our residents. And Deb, you've been a part of us, so we want to continue to hear from you. And I especially want to thank you for everything you did to the cultural, everything you brought to the Cultural Arts Board. The Cultural Arts Board was a new board that was formed this year. So it's always a challenge when you start something new. Deb has the talent and the experience. And I think she, what we have heard here tonight, I think you did very well serving the city in your efforts in the Cultural Arts Board and bringing some of the Friday night music to the park and using the facility very well.
Thank you. Ted? David?
Good evening. First, I would like to thank... When I first ran, Ms. Gaddis and Tony Williams helped me tremendously. And as my behalf of the community, I thank you. Last Saturday, baseball of Hackensack had its closing base ceremony. Each athlete received a trophy and lunch before it rained. Tomorrow night, at Atlantic Street Park, which so many people complained about, we'll have Shakespeare in the Park, The Taming of the Shrew. Last Thursday, the middle school and high school graduation ceremony was excellent. Congratulations to all who graduated and proud parents, grandparents and guardians. This Thursday, I'm traveling with senior citizens to Washington DC through the National Museum of African-American History and Culture. Our summer camps opened on Monday. This year, we have 288 kids registered. Camp registration is now closed. We reached our capacity at all camps except for one. This year, we have 86 counselors and five volunteers. Thursday, at the Atlantic Street Park, which so many people complained about and didn't want, we will have Movies Under the Stars. The movie Despicable Me 2 starts at 7:30. Next Tuesday, our July 4 festivities will take place at Faschini Park. We will have our annual flea market along with food vendors, games and kiddie rides. In the evening, we will have Performance by the Time Machine at 7:15, ending with fireworks at 9:15. I want to thank the honor guard and Joe Lynn Turner. You made us proud. I want to thank you all for coming out this evening. Get home safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right. I'm sorry, Dan. Actually, I should let you go last.
Oh, boy, okay. I saw Mrs. Oats come in the door and it reminded me that tonight, her daughter and my classmate, Andrea Oats-Parchment, was elevated to the Assistant Superintendent tonight for the Board of Education. Andrea has made our community very proud. And I look forward to her stewardship along with the newly-appointed school superintendent, Rosemary Marks. I know she's going to do a wonderful job. Lara and council, maybe you guys can work on separating the board meetings so that we can attend both, you know? Being on the same day, you know, we can't go to both places. And I would have loved to have been there when Andrea was elevated. Doc Russell, is he still here? Did he leave? Oh, anyway. Doc, also known as Too Sweet. He has been a staple in our community for as long as I can remember. And as a youngster, I remember seeing him perform Mick the Quick. I don't know if you remember that record that he did? And his singing and dancing and, you know, we laughed a little bit, but, you know, he was an inspiration to me to pursue my musical career, which I did for nearly 25 years as a performer. He's been an advocate for the community, especially for the youth. And maybe we can, or you can, draw up something and have it sent down to him. Because he's, he has been in our community for years and years and years. And I remember getting an email saying that he was leaving. And I'm sorry that I personally slept on it, but, you know, if the council would consider drawing up something for him and recognizing his contribution to the community, that would be really, really great. I know there's a separation of church and state. But tonight, I have to thank the Most High for this day. Loretta Weinberg tore me up tonight. I have to say that I said I wasn't going to cry, but she made me cry. Tonight marks my last meeting as councilwoman, and I am so thankful for this life experience. I've learned so much about governance and can truly appreciate the perspective of sitting in this seat as well as in those seats where I'll be after June 30th. I'm thankful for the opportunity and the good experiences that I've encountered while being a councilperson. But I'm just as thankful for the tough times that tested my strength to stand on my morals and ethics, knowing my stand would be unpopular with this council. As the newbie on the council, I had to go through a crash course to catch up to speed. And I would not have been able to do it without a lot of kindness, patience, knowledge and professionalism from the wonderful, wonderful people who work for this city. This is not an easy seat to sit in. You're not going to please everybody. But the employees of this city made my job so much easier. And I'm going to name them. And I hope, I hope I don't leave anybody out, charge it to my head, not my heart. Jacqueline, Jan and Barbara in the city manager's office. Debbie. Regina and Allison, thank you. Clerk's office. Jim Mangan and his staff in the financial office. I have to say, Jim, who, he went through a tough year, a very tough year. He lost his wife and she was very sick before she passed on. But that man never wavered. He didn't lose one step in his capacity as the CFO. He was so inspirational to me. And I just wondered how, where he got the strength to do it every day. Al Dib, is he here? There you are. The man who knows it all and can do it all. Thank you for your patience and your kindness. Fire Chief Freeman, Police Captain Aquila and their staff. And the men and women who lay their lives on the line every day, thank you. Ernie and Al and the staff at the building department, thank you. Tony, Jesse and the staff in sanitation in the DPW department. To the guys in the DPW department, you're worth fighting for, and I'm sure the people of Hackensack would do it again if necessary. Simeon Cumberbatch, Personnel Director, thank you. Sharon Constantine and the staff at the Johnston Public Library who are doing wonderful things for the community. Art Carlson, Tax Assessor, Elisa Cochia, I think that's how you say her last name, the Tax Collector, thank you all. The Recreation Department, Pat, who retired, Talia and Bill, who have since moved on. Greg, Steve, Nita, Rose, Rashawn, they're doing a great job. Thank you. Cultural Arts, and you know, the guys in the Cultural Arts Department, that's my heart. Greg, Rose, Frank. The Cultural Arts Board. Cassine and the others. I was very privileged to be the first liaison from the council. And if anybody knows me, you know that music is a part of my fabric. The arts is a part of my fabric. And it was an honor. And I thank the council for allowing me to hold that position. And all the other boards, the volunteer boards, thank you for your service. You don't have to do it, but you do it. And we really, really appreciate it. Bob Sway, you know you're right here. Thank you for the great work you do behind the camera and for being a friend. Andy, is he around? Our maintenance guy?
On vacation.
Oh, he's on vacation, okay. Well, usually when I come in here to the meetings, he's the first one I see. And I know, when I see him, you know, he always puts a smile on my face, so kind, so generous. And he does generous and he does a great job here maintaining this building. The legal staff, Pat's in present, Steve Kleiman, thank you. Judge Carver and Katie, they're a part of my experience here. City Planner Fran Reiner, thank you, Fran. I hope you see this, you're doing a great job. Even former city manager David Trost, part of my experience, thank you. And I say the best for last, Mr. Ted Ehrenberg. Thank you for listening even before you were hired. You have proven to be a fair-handed city manager who has earned the respect of most, and that's saying a whole lot. I pray for your health and your strength, for your job is a tough one. But you're doing it and you're doing it, doing it fabulously. I thank you for your sense of humor, your experience and your professionalism. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Mutually.
All the people that I've named have been, have made an impact on my life during my tenure and are doing a wonderful job for the citizens of this town. I wish them all God's blessings and I wish that he protects them all so that they continue to do so. To the folks who are the regular attendees of these meetings, you know who you are. Thank you. Because your attendance and voices serve to demand accountability on our part, as it should. There's a saying nowadays that, and it says, stay woke, which really means just be aware. The people in those chairs, the regular attendees, are woke. But even if you can't make the meetings, go on YouTube, the city's website, the public access channels and come out of the zone of apathy. You need to know what's going on in this town, good, bad or indifferent. Stay woke. At the last meeting, oh, as an elected official, you're privy to insider information and you're held to a higher standard. It's very easy to take advantage of this seat. And what's more difficult is resisting the temptation to do so. That is the challenge. At the last meeting, the mayor mentioned in his statement that there are people who wanted to see them fail or see him fail. And that statement struck a nerve with me because if you fail, everyone fails. I believe a lot of faith and confidence was lost in the past four years, but I'm just as hopeful and prayerful that what was lost will be redeemed in these next four years through sincere actions. There was a post on Facebook this morning that I saw. And it said, "The higher we are placed, the more humbly we should walk." I've tried to walk as humbly as I could, being in this position. Because I believe that to walk humbly comes from a place of strength, not weakness. Humility is strength. So I wish for this council nothing but success in your next term. Because if you succeed, we all succeed. we all succeed. And last, I want to thank all the people that have come out, all my friends. I've made some lifelong friends, I believe, some new lifelong friends during my tenure here. And I want to thank you all, my old friends, my new friends, for coming out tonight and speaking such niceties. It's, you know, very heartwarming and, you know, I, I did my best, that's all I can say. But, um, and I especially want to give thanks to my husband and my son Joshua, my husband Vic and my son Joshua. It takes a special man and son to put up with a woman like me. I thank them, you know? They may not like that I'll be home as much, that I'd be home more, let's put it like that. But, um, I just thank my family. I love them and I appreciate them. I love you and I appreciate you. And I just wish you all love and peace. Thank you.
Okay, you're a tough act to follow to this day. Talked about the two-way conversion. I just wanted to speak about one part of Main Street, when that goes back to two-way. A lot of people, because I saw comments is, how, you know, when people stop on the street or trying to park, how is that, you know, going to affect traffic? Because now you can't go around because you're going into the other lane. Well, it's going to be called tandem parking. We're, we're reducing the amount of spots, so you're no longer back into your spot, you just pull into your spot. There'll also be no buses on Main Street anymore. Everything's being rerouted to go out more. And it'll hit cross streets and it'll come down State Street. So there'll be no more buses on Main Street. Trailer and truck deliveries will only be during certain times of the day, so that's all going to be managed. It's all part of the plan, but that's, that's important to know, because a lot of the people are wondering how that's going to happen. Couple of weeks ago, I went to the, I was invited to the first Parker School Lunch Social. And it was a great, great event. I forgot to mention it at the last council meeting. And it was held at a hula hands, and these little fourth graders marched in, holding hands like perfect little ladies and gentlemen. And they're, they're all about learning manners and respect for each other and holding doors for people. All the stuff that we seem to have forgotten, a lot, especially a lot of our youth today in the past, is coming back. And I want to give a heads up to Merna Gataw and, and, and her team of, of folks that ran that program. It was great, and it was the first one. I'm looking forward to them keep going with that. It was a great, great little, great little program. I want to thank our honor guard tonight, they were very impressive. Those guys are, you know, very impressive-looking group of ladies and gentlemen there. And I noticed everybody kept in line while they were standing there. I also want to recognize, and should have done it before, but our Vice President of our school board here in Hackensack, Mrs. Larry Rodriguez is here. She didn't introduce herself as the Vice President, but I'm going to, because you should be recognized for that. Joel Lynn Turner and I go way back, over forty years since, since I've known Joe. And great musician, and it was nice to see him honored tonight. I thank you for that, Deb. Main Street Alliance, you know, we'll be putting that check in the bank tomorrow, one-hundred-and-sixty? One-oh-one?
One-ten.
One-ten, one-hundred-and-ten? Great, great, great job by them. Deborah Kealan Geddes. Yeah, because we, can you see him still here? You're still here. You and I are going to agree on some things tonight.
All right.
You know? And, all right? And, and you know, you know, sometimes what the eye sees isn't what's really happening. And, and I understand what you were saying, but there was some politics involved, because there was a lot of stuff happened during election cycle. But we knew what we were doing, especially with Mrs. Geddes, when we put her on that cultural arts board. No doubt about it. That's where you belong, that's where your passion was. It's, it's a perfect fit for the cultural arts board, and it was a great move by us. And we appreciate everything she's done there. You know, to see him as since said soon-to-be citizen, Ms. Kealan Geddes, I, and yes, you will be a citizen, but you'll always be considered councilwoman Geddes. You'll earn that honor, and you'll always be considered that. So you'll be getting that from me when you see me. And I was glad to hear about the scholarships that the cultural arts are now giving out. That's a wonderful, wonderful thing. And let me tell you something, she's, she hit the nail on the head, and Senator Weinberg would, would reinforce this. Anybody that runs for public office and sits in these seats, I don't care what side you're on, Republican, independent, Democrat, I don't care what you are, you're making a sacrifice that most people are not willing to make. And the things you go through, all right? Senator Weinberg, when I was first elected, and don't forget, I was in the same, kind of the same position as Deb. When I got elected in two thousand and nine, I sat there for four years, getting my butt kicked on a weekly basis. But then there were times when I got to put my feet up and watch them get their butt kicked next to folks out there, which was okay. But, you know, anyone who steps into the ring of fire, which we call local politics, deserves respect and they should be recognized. It's not an easy task, it's, it's a tough thing to do. And I'm certain, we have not heard the last of Mrs. Kealan Geddes, that's for sure. I had a laugh at one point, Jason, I know Jason Solm's left, but he talked about the similarity, you know, his closeness now with, with Deb after they were opponents. I have a similar situation. I have Larry Eisen, who ran against myself, or I ran against him back in two thousand and nine, and it was a very close race. And now we're best of friends.
Thirty-four votes, that's all.
Thirty-four votes. Got to remind me every time. But we're, we're best of friends and we, we work wonderfully together. And that's a good thing. Good things come out of stuff like that, so that, that was good. Deb, you've done a, you know, I give you a lot of credit. You know, you, you brought things to the forefront. When we were looking at privatization, you brought it out, you brought the people out, all right? And opened our eyes. And you, you and Dave were the driving force behind that. And that's the way it's supposed to work. That is the way it is supposed to work. We come up with a plan, we try to move it forward, you don't like it, good chance, you know, this council will change their mind and try to do something else. All right? And that's, that's the way it's supposed to work. We have listened to the people when, when they have come out, like, in that instance. And I thank you for that. July first is the reorg, but more important than that, I asked that everybody on July sixth, at six o'clock, go down to Memorial Park on Main Street, down by the Lito Restaurant down there. That's the memorial for the firemen, the five firemen we lost back in nineteen eighty-eight on the July Fourth Fire. It's very, not long, but very somber, and it's, you know, it's, it's something you have to see. And, you know, it took five of our finest, and they deserve to be honored and remembered every year. And that fire, by the way, changed the way fires are fought across, not just New Jersey, not just the United States, but the whole planet. Right? Trust fire, trust building fires are now fought totally different due to the Ford Fire in Hackensack, New Jersey. Being an old wrestler, I'm going to close with this, and this is for you. You know, there's a movie out, it was called Vision Quest, I don't know if you've ever seen it or not. It's Madonna's, first, she's in the first, first time she's ever in a movie. But there's a scene in it where the guy says to the wrestler, he goes, "It's not the six minutes," and the six minutes is how long a wrestling match is. He goes, "It's what happens in the six minutes." All right? So it's not the time you were here, it's what happened when you were here. So Deb, I respect you, I look forward to working with you again, and everybody have a wonderful evening and get home. Safe. Thank you. You're welcome.
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second. Anybody second?
Need a second? Roll call.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
David, thank you for this.